I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley, Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer, Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next item is, the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Matter pertaining to an individual student and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education return to open session. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, good evening. The next item on the agenda is our state award winners. Dr. Small. Eric Winkowski, Director of Athletics and Activities, if you would come forward and introduce us to some very successful coaches and athletes that we have here tonight.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some talented swimmers, runners, and a very talented golfer. Athletes, as your coach introduces you, please walk forward to the podium and receive your award and stand next to the podium. Additionally, any family members that are present here tonight should stand and be recognized as your student is introduced by their coach. Assisting me with awards tonight will be Palatine High School Principal Toni Medina and Athletic Director Luis Arroyo, Fremd High School Principal Mark Langer and Athletic Director Hameed Mary Oskwe, and Schaumburg High School Athletic Director Marty Manning. Okay, so we'll get started. Anthony DiStefano. Anthony, why don't you come on forward? Anthony is in his first year teaching in the Fremd math department. He has brought 13 years of cross-country coaching experience to District 211 and is in his first year as the head cross-country coach at Palatine High School. Anthony.
Hi, thank you, board, and Dr. Smalls. Accompanied by her parents tonight, Micah and Kristen Jordan, Abigail Jordan from Palatine High School. Abigail's an incredibly dedicated runner. This summer, months before our season started, she is running hundreds of miles before her classmates are even awake. Yeah, and that hard work and preparation led to a stellar season of many accolades where she was all-conference, all-regionals, all-sectionals, and finally placing 15th at the state championships, being all-state with a state qualifying team as well. So, have a good one.
Alright, next is Joe Parks. Joe Parks is a wellness and drivers' education teacher at Palatine High School and a very successful head cross-country coach for the last 14 years. His teams have qualified for the state meet 12 of the last 13 years, and he's brought home five state trophies, including the state title in 2009. In total, 17 of Joe's athletes have earned all-state finishes, and Joe has twice been named the Illinois Cross-Country Coach of the Year. Joe.
Alright, thank you. I'm here to recognize Mason Krieg. Mason, if you want to come on up. Mason's here with his parents, Scott and Jennifer. Mason, this is his second time here. He was recognized last year for similar honors. Mason's a senior. Mason is coach's dream, honestly. He's just a hard-working athlete. He's an excellent student, wonderful teammate, and leader on our team. He was 21st last year in the state meet and returned this year. He ended up being the conference champion. He was a medalist at the regional sectional meet, in a place in 12th in the state meet this year. He also helped our team to conference championship, regional sectional championship, and hopefully just to an eighth-place finish at the state meet. He plans to continue his running next year. He's looking at numerous schools, opportunities to continue his academics and athletics at the collegiate level. So, we'll miss him and looking forward to get to coach him one more season this coming winter and spring in track. So, congrats, Mason.
Alright, now we'll move from the cross-country on to the swimming pool. Sam Trupa. This season marked Coach Trupa's first season as the varsity girls swim and dive coach at Palatine High School. He has previously served as the head age group coach for multiple clubs before assuming the duties at Palatine. Currently, Coach Trupa also serves as the Palatine JV Girls Water Polo Coach.
Thank you. This is my first time, so I'm going to read off of my phone so I don't get it wrong. I would like to introduce Eugene Shin, along with her parents Sung Yip and Su Jung. This season was full of accomplishments for Eugene. Apart from gaining an impressive collection of medals and ribbons from the numerous meets that she competed in, Eugene also managed to place 11th at state after swimming with a bloody nose. Eugene works incredibly hard. She is incredibly dedicated to swimming. She is the first person in the water and she is the last person out of the water, and she is a true leader on the team. None of Eugene's success happened overnight. Everything that she has accomplished, she has worked for, she has grinded for, and she has earned. Eugene is a fierce competitor, a great leader, and a hard worker. She encompasses all the values of what it means to be a pirate, and it has been my honor to go on this journey with you. Congratulations on all of your accomplishments, Eugene.
Alright, next we'll move on to Fremd High School. Andrew Kettrell has been the wellness, has been a wellness teacher at Fremd High School since 2010-10, where he also currently serves as the Wellness Department Chair. Andrew has been the girls' swimming and diving coach for Fremd for the last 13 years. Two of his teams have been sectional champs, and one team finished in the top 10 in the NHTSA state championship. In addition, Coach Kettrell has been fortunate to coach seven All-Americans and 15 state medalists. Andrew?
I went with the paper. Thank you very much for having us. Tonight, I'd like to recognize two exceptional young athletes from the Fremd girls' swimming and diving team, Q Janae and Katie Keen. Q is joined by her parents tonight. Katie is joined by her parents and her grandparents as well. Q and Katie are exceptional young people, and they've had a very special year. It only seems fitting that I speak about these fantastic young people together. Both of these young women broke multiple varsity records over the course of the season, as well as, by my conservative account, combined 10 different pool records. Both of them were the MSL Conference Champions in their events, Katie in the 50-100 freestyles and Q in diving. Katie and Q also went undefeated in their respective events in the 50 freestyle and diving during the regular season. Both of them were also state medalists. Katie took third in the 50 freestyle and seventh in the 100 freestyle, and Q took third in diving, and they will both be all-state athletes, as well as two-time NISC All-Americans this spring. Finally, these two young women together helped Fremd finish 13th overall in the state meet as a team. Just the two of them. I'm exceptionally proud of these young people. They're outstanding leaders in the pool. They're fantastic teammates to their peers and credits to their community. They have helped elevate our program to new heights, and we can't wait to see what they will do next year. Yes, we have one more year with them. Ladies, congratulations on an incredible year. Well done.
Alright, next we have Tim O'Grady. Tim is in his seventh year teaching math at Schaumburg High School. For six of those seven years, he's served as both the head boys, heads, the head coach for both the boys and the girls' program, and Tim currently is just the girls' swim head coach. Tim?
Thank you. Here with her parents, Agnieszka and Robert, is Zuzanna Krasnicki. Zuzia had a phenomenal sophomore swim season this past fall. While effortlessly being an extremely effective leader of our team and being a straight-A student, she managed some historic swims. As a sophomore, she placed ninth in the state in the 50-yard free, broke our school record in the event, which she previously held, and achieved an All-American consideration cut. Zuzia also placed fourth at the state meet in the 100-yard freestyle. Her two swims placed Schaumburg as the 21st team at state. We look forward to watching Zuzia grow as a swimmer and continuing to lead her teammates. Congratulations, Zuzia.
Alright, and finally move on to the Lynx. Mark Johnson. Mark Johnson has been a member of the Palatine High School Social Studies Department since 2002. He has spent the last 14 years as the head boys' golf coach, in addition to previously serving as the head girls' basketball coach. Mark?
Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. I'd like to introduce you to Pablo Castro, who's a junior golfer at Palatine High School. Alright, he's here with his parents, Roberto and Rebecca. They've been tremendous supporters of the program, as have our principal and our athletic director as well. Pablo is the two-time reigning Player of the Year for boys' golf in the MSL. He's also a two-time state qualifier. This past year, he finished 10th in the state and was awarded an all-state medal, and that was Palatine's first all-state golfer since 1999. So, we're extremely proud of him. And the golf is something that he's very good at, but he is an even more exceptional young man. He's a great teammate. He is one of those kids that's really going to have an impact on the world when he leaves this high school. So, we're very proud of him. Pablo Castro.
Well, congratulations to our student athletes. Thank you for all the time that you put into it, not just your activity, but also into your academics. Thank you to the parents for what you do to get them to the different activities and supporting them. Couldn't do it without you and your support to the students and to the school. So, thank you very, very much. Before we end our recognition, we're going to take pictures of our students. So, let's have our students come on over here. We'll get pictures, so we'll take a break for just a few minutes. Alright, our next item on the agenda is the public hearings. Public comments. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. And the board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. You will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper at the end of the table here. Alright. We have 10 people that are speaking. I'll call the first name and I'll call the second name so that person is ready to come to the podium. The first speaker is Jane Van, followed by Rachel Hyman.
As she stated, my name is Jane Van, and I am a resident of Palatine. Oftentimes, I have come before 211 boards and District 15 boards, and most of the time, I have everything written out and just read what I wrote at home. Today, I'm going strictly from the heart, so bear with me when I stumble. Many topics have come up over the years when I have spoken that have a tendency to ignite community comments. Some of those topics have been, most recently, curriculum for sex education. Before that was transgender students in a locker room. Before that was money spent by the district for sports facilities. People have commented on how science is taught within our district. What is being taught in our history classes? Is critical race theory being taught? And the list goes on and on. People come forward while they feel ignited and speak with the board, or speak to the board, with no response. I'm here today to make a request, and I have asked this before. I think it has been attempted, but it wasn't attempted in the manner in which I was speaking. And that is, I'm asking 211 to provide a location that would allow community members to have true, open dialogue. Board members and administrators present. I want no preset agenda. I'm asking for a location for true conversation. People get up here and they will say things that I personally don't agree with, and quite frankly, I'm sure I say things that they don't agree with. But we never have an opportunity to look each other in the eye and try to come to an understanding of what it is that's dividing us so dramatically. Our state, our community, our country, we are divided right now, and we do not need to be. True dialogue, conversation, is what is necessary. I don't know where to do that, how to find the location, how to get people from a different point of view than I have to be willing to decently, respectfully, have a conversation. What is it that's dividing us so dramatically? I'm asking 211 to provide the space. Maybe somebody on the board can give me the guidance as to how I get this started, but I do not want preset agendas. I do not want a board member or the superintendent dictating the flow of the conversation. I want true dialogue with my community members. I firmly feel that change within our country, community, school, board members, change does not occur without dialogue and conversation unless one is existing in a dictatorial environment. If anyone on the board or the superintendent would like my email address or phone number, I am expecting a response of some kind to this statement that I made tonight.
Thank you. Please give your number then to Mr. Teniper. Thank you. Rachel Hyman, followed by Robert Frankel. If you give it to...
Hello? Okay, hi. My name is Rachel Hyman, and I'm a mom of a student at Palatine High School. And I'm just here for my own, for my own self, but I'm hoping that maybe in the future it will help others as well. I'm asking for dispensation to a rule that we have here in the district as it pertains to foreign exchange students. My family is going to be sponsoring a boy, Jose Pedro, from Brazil, for next school year. He'll be coming here for the, his senior year in high school, and we're very excited to host him at the school. We've been talking to the school, and the program I'm working with, Flag, has been talking to the school as well. And we, again, it's a big undertaking for a family who's hosting a student. The vetting process that goes on and so forth, it's been very time-consuming. And, you know, but we've participated in that. And our children are excited. My, you know, I got my husband on board. My daughter, who at first said, "I don't want another older brother", I found her on her computer secretly trying to learn Portuguese to get ready for his arrival. It's very cute. And so, we're all very excited for this, for this time period to share Palatine High School, because we love it, and of course, just to share Palatine and, in a general sense, our country with a boy who wants nothing more than to come and spend some time here before he decides whether or not college in America is going to be for him. He is, like I said, the program requires that he is a senior, which he will be, and it requires that he will be 17 years old, which he will be. But he will be 17 years old after the start of the school year, which then makes him ineligible to come and do the program. So, we're hoping that, sorry, we're hoping that the board might be able to make a change in the wording of the rule, that instead of saying that a student coming to the school for an exchange program, instead of saying "has to be 17 and/or a senior", we're hoping it can make a change that they have to be 17 slash and/or a senior, or something to that effect, so that a situation like this, I mean, again, if you think of the way that we're thinking of it logically and with, you know, a little bit of compassion and mercy, it's not really his fault when he was born. And so, he will be a senior, and he will, you know, he's, I passed out some information about him just so you could see what he's all about. I mean, you know, he's a strong student, and he's athletic, and he's, you know, from a nice family and with the dog, and, you know, your perfect American family, but he's Brazilian. And so, we're hoping that for our family in the upcoming year, but also for future families, what I consider to be pretty arbitrary age limit could maybe be an exception. And so, if it were a legal matter, for example, they had to be 18, that would make sense, because there, you know, I'd say, well, in America, 18 is the age of, you know, adulthood and contracts and so forth, so that I would understand. But the difference between 16 and, you know, 912s and 17 doesn't really have any kind of, as far as I know, any kind of actual legal difference. They don't have any extra rights or responsibilities from one age to another. And so, I'm hoping that in this case, and then in the future, if that were to come up again, that perhaps there could be a change in that matter so that we, our family can continue in our quest to sponsor this nice man to come to Palatine High School next year. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Robert Frankel, followed by Jerry Frida.
Good evening. I've come to this board several times on a matter of, that affected me greatly because I spent 40 years as a library trustee, Schaumburg Library, and I don't like the idea of anybody deciding a book should not be on the shelf, a book should not be read. And I think that's fine. If you want your child not to read it, don't let them read it. Don't make that decision for anybody else. That's unfair. You're a minority who want, who wants a book banned. When the American Library Association decides to have a book, they evaluate it very carefully as to its literary merit. They're going one step further. Now, they're opposing the wellness program that includes sex education. And what they're doing is, they have found very wealthy individuals who are willing to sponsor this and run candidates for various things, library boards, school boards, that oppose this and want to impose their will on anybody else. So, yes, the same thing happens. If a parent doesn't want their child to be in this particular curriculum, they can opt out, but they should not have the right to impose the minority, their minority vision to everybody else. But they will, if they can, if they're voted in and they have the majority of a board. And that's a real danger, because that takes away my freedom and most of the other people who oppose what they have to say. So, I'm here today just to let you know that even if I'm singular, I will be going around and talking to people regarding the school board election, because I am so diametrically opposed to anybody who wants to censor our children, the curriculum, who doesn't believe that these children, children, young adults deserve to know what's going on. I hope that there are other people that will join me, and I'm sure there will. But please, the idea of a minority trying to dictate to the majority is an anathema. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Frida, followed by Joyce Slavic.
My name is Jerry Frida, and I'm a resident of the district. While attending the last board meeting, I was struck by the reactions of Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski when the subject of a resolution came up that in part would discourage board member candidates from receiving financial assistance for their candidacy from political parties in the hope that, of maintaining the nonpartisan nature of school board elections. Mr. Kramer seemed agitated and declared that, quote, "I believe the Democrat Party supported some school board candidates", unquote. When Ms. Klimkowitz attempted to explain the resolution and began to point out that Mr. Kramer had himself received money from political parties, Mr. Dombrowski interrupted her in mid-sentence, cited Robert's Rule of Order passage that for some reason quickly shut down the discussion. I don't know exactly why Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski wanted to be so secretive about the source of their funds. Maybe it's because in 2019, Mr. Kramer's campaign received $5,000 from right-wing extremist billionaire Dick Uline, the same Dick Uline who donated $300,000 to the Sons of Liberty Ministry, whose leader approved of the execution of homosexuals. But anyway, it was a weird and disruptive couple of minutes that I think left some corrections and distinctions to be made. First, after checking, I could find no evidence that the Democratic Party has or has any future plans to contribute any financial support to any D-211 school board candidates. So, I hope that Mr. Kramer, wherever he is, will disabuse himself of his misinformed notion and states so as to correct the record. Second, the Robert's Rule of Order passage that Mr. Dombrowski cited while interrupting Ms. Klimkowitz states that, quote, "The chair maintain a courteous tone, and especially in reference to any divergence of opinion, and avoid interjecting a personal note into the debate. To this end, they must never attack or make an allusion to the motives of members", unquote. So then, hypocritically, less than 20 minutes later in his inflammatory remarks during the debate on the wellness program, Mr. Dombrowski described the supporters of the motion as representing, quote, "some fictional silent majority of pseudo-hermits that the ACLU and Justice Warriors would hope we blatantly accept", unquote. Really? I would hope that Mr. Dombrowski would apologize to the board for disregarding the rules of decorum that he so stridently demands of others. Most of District 211 taxpayers expect steady, fact-based progress for their already outstanding public school system, something that thankfully, the majority of this board seems dedicated to providing. I hope that Mr. Kramer's and Mr. Dombrowski's disruptive actions are not signs of things to come. They create chaos and run counter to the desire of this community to simply provide an honest and quality education for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Joyce Slavic, followed by Mick... Joyce Slavik, followed by Mick Gasso.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik. I am a member of the D-211 community. At the April board meeting, Mark Hibner, the district chair for the Applied Technology Department at Palatine High School, spoke about the Applied Technology Department. He was respectful, engaging, and spoke about how amazing the program is and how it's transformed the lives of students. They receive college credit, internships, and good-paying jobs as a result of their experience in the Applied Tech Department. He spoke about how their program is recognized nationally and even internationally. The one thing he asked for was air conditioning for the department to make the environment safe and healthy. The heat and humidity is extremely high in the summer months. It's dangerous for students and damaging to the equipment. Multiple board members spoke about their own experiences in those rooms. Propping open doors is not an option for security and because it also impacts the climate on the rest of the building. We are not a poor district. Our district is not wasteful. The bid was within expected ranges. Making our buildings safe and healthy for our students should be a no-brainer. And yet, Mr. Dombrowski voted no to give this department, those students, and staff a safe and comfortable environment in which to work. And I found that really sad and troubling. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael or Mick Gasso, followed by Terry Paulson.
My name is Michael Gasso, but most people call me Mick. I'm the Northwest Regional Director for Illinois Family Institute's Public School Exit Team. IFI is a faith-based organization that's pro-life, pro-marriage, that's marriage between one man and one woman. I retired last year as a driver's ed teacher from Barrington because I saw it was on the horizon in SB 818. Mr. McGowan, last month, you asked people to be respectful when you spoke, but you blurted out the name of Jesus in your very thoughtless use of my Lord and Savior's name. I and others found it very disrespectful. You seemingly tried to justify the garbage curriculum. You voted for it by the following quoting, "One of the biggest things I can focus from is I had to sit with two children who were sexually assaulted, and the only reason it happened is because they didn't know their own body parts," end quote. While I deplore what happened to those children and pray for God's healing on them, you're alluding to the fact that comprehensive sex ed is the only way one could learn from body, about their body parts is totally wrong. Whether you teach sex ed or not, there are required topics to teach under the health standards from ISP, including reproductive anatomy like any other body system and abstinence until marriage, still a mandated topic. Dr. Small, you're blatantly wrong in saying that you either teach this garbage or nothing at all. Dr. Small and those board members that are soon to be ousted, do you know there's a curriculum called Abstinence and Marriage that's been around for years and in just the last five years and now in about 310 schools in Illinois, serving nearly 41,000 students, and it's in all 50 states? A curriculum that teaches self-discipline, responsibility, self-control, respect, character, and helps in relationship building now and in the future. Parents, when you flip this board in April, I strongly urge you to look into the Abstinence and Marriage curriculum. Dr. Small, you seemed almost giddy last month in saying that Hoffman Estates High School was now rated exemplary by the state. That's like saying a baseball player hitting 200 is the best hitter on the team. At Hoffman last year, a whopping 67% of students did not fully meet proficiency levels in English-language arts, and a terrible 60% did not meet, fully meet proficiency levels in math, and that's at a cost of $22,000 per student. Numbers are even worse at the commendable Palatine High. Parents, the longer your kids are in public schools, the greater the chance of them being exposed to perversion of teachers like the one in Ohio who gave a writing prompt asking students to write a sex scene that they wouldn't show their mom. Everyone, if a private school like the extremely successful Valeo Academy in Hoffman Estates is not affordable, then I perfectly ask you to consider homeschooling. Home-educated students typically score 15 to 30 percentile points above public school students on standardized academic achievement tests. You never know what the next thing that you're going to have to fight for, like them possibly forcing your kids to take a COVID vaccine. You and your precious children deserve better, better. My metaphor last month about the school building being on fire still holds true. The five district buildings of 211 are on fire. Run, save your children, get them away from this horrific district now. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Paulson, followed by Stacy Gale.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As you know, my name is Terry Paulson. Your decision to adopt the National Sex Ed Standards last month was disappointing but expected. Once again, you failed to represent the values of your constituents. Mr. Dombrowski, thank you for your representation. Your articulate smackdown of this board for their failure to represent us was much appreciated, and it rightly brought the House down. Your timely question about District 15 revealed the deception of our superintendent. Call it sex ed or call it health, the truth is that D-211 did not have to adopt the NSES in order to teach about sex. Dr. Small knows it, and you know it. Mr. Bradley, you wouldn't meet with your constituents before the meeting. You didn't say anything at all during the discussion, and you voted as expected. One might reasonably suspect that you are unable to defend your actions. Mr. McGowan, your juvenile and unprofessional display after the vote last month demonstrated just how unqualified you are for this position. Ms. Cavill, it's no surprise that you voted for this. As the creator of a podcast for children entitled "All About Anal," you have proven that your judgment in this area is severely impaired. In earlier days, with greater wisdom, this would have disqualified you from sitting on a school board. Ms. Klimkowitz, you seem to be trying to assuage our fears with repeated questions to Dr. Small, assuring us that D-211 was not going to be teaching any of those nasty standards found in the bulk of the NSES, except that it already is. D-211 school libraries are full of books containing graphic descriptions of anal sex, oral sex, and worse. We would be idiots to believe either of you. And even if we did, are we supposed to be comforted by what you tell us you are going to be teaching, which is gender ideology propaganda and teaching it as fact? Mr. Rosenblum, a school that teaches minor children the lie that they may be one of hundreds of genders is decidedly not a safe school. You might as well support them in believing that 2 plus 2 equals 5. That would actually be better because at least they wouldn't go get castrated over it. To all of you who voted for this, to teach this radical perverse curriculum to minor children, it's clear that there is a chasm between your values and those of the community you are supposed to serve. Last week, it came to light that there is a school in Chicago teaching queer sex to minors, that even you, they are even using items such as butt plugs and dildos in the classroom. That kind of school seems like it would be a better fit for you than this district.
Thank you. Stacy Gale, followed by Vicki Wilson.
Good evening. I request you add a review of the IIIA investigation and policy as an item for future discussion for the January or February board meeting. I recently read Mr. Schumacher's findings for his IIIA investigation, and aside from the videos, I have some questions I would like answered in writing. Dr. Small, did you review Mr. Schumacher's findings before he finalized and published them? Did you approve his family findings and consider them complete? Did his investigation and findings meet the district standards? Why didn't Mr. Schumacher address whether the materials met each of the six district criteria in his investigation? Dr. Small, as an administrator with a PhD, do you believe Ms. Med's lesson was balanced? Do you agree with Mr. Schumacher's statement? The videos are literary works and award-winning. The learning targets of the unit included, I can understand the ideas, issues, concepts, and values reflected in our nonfiction literature. The videos are nonfiction? Really? So, to be clear, it is Mr. Schumacher's assertion the two videos are nonfiction, award-winning literary works. Dr. Small, do you agree the videos are nonfiction? Are they literary works appropriate for sophomore English? Additional planned instruction from Ms. Med included the following. We will be analyzing the song and video "This Is America" by Childish Gambino and explore how Donald Glover's song paints a vision of the black experience. "This Is America" paints a picture of a black man executing an individual at point-blank, massacring a church choir with an automated weapon, and using drugs with the repeated message, "Black man, get your money." The lyrics of the nonfiction literary work DNA include, "DNA, I got realness. I just kill shit 'cause it's in my DNA. I got dark, I got evil, that rot inside my DNA. Sex, money, murder, our DNA." This is part of Ms. Med's English lesson at Hoffman Estates High School. One of the goals, to understand the ideas, issues, concepts, and values reflected in our nonfiction literature. The lesson was far from, was far from balanced. It was extreme, it was one-sided, and it was racist. In his analysis, Mr. Schumacher only mentioned the violence and vulgar language. He didn't address the lack of balance. Is that because his personal bias blinded him to the one-sided lesson? Mr. Schumacher is a well-paid administrator whose job was to conduct a thorough and impartial investigation of a parent's complaints. His findings were as one-sided as the lesson. Last month, five of you approved the comprehensive sex ed standards with no knowledge of the source for instructional material. Mr. Rosenblum, you may be a fan of Kendrick Lamar and believe BET awards are the proper criteria for instructional materials, but I do not. Ms. Cavill, as a comprehensive sex ed teacher, do you find this English lesson to be balanced? Do you find Mr. Schumacher's investigation and findings to be complete? Mr. McGowan, are these videos representative of the black experience in our district? Do you want teachers teaching students black men kill and sell drugs to get their money? Do you want teachers asserting the lyrics "sex, money, murder" is in the DNA of black people is nonfiction? Hoffman Estates High School has the greatest percentage of black students in all of D-211 schools. Why was this lesson taught in this school? Our students deserve better. If this complaint had gone to the next level in the process, would there have been a different outcome? Or do all administrators in our district believe these horrible things about black students? I would like to see the investigation continue to the next step in the process and see what happens. Mr. Schumacher is a very powerful position, and I am concerned he is using his position of power to push his personal beliefs into the curriculum. I request the board review his investigation and findings and determine if it was complete and accurate and take the necessary actions to ensure our children are taught how to think, not what to think. You want parents to trust this administration to teach comprehensive sex ed? How can we? I look forward to the motion to add this item for future discussion and ensuing discussion.
Thank you. Vicki Wilson, followed by, Vicki Wilson, followed by Myrna Frankel.
Last month, this room was packed with parents and community members asking you to hear their concerns, and these are my observations from my seat in the front row. Mrs. Cavill, you almost never looked up, even when you were addressed directly. I saw you spend that time writing with a pencil and then erasing a lot, so it was clear you weren't taking notes. Were you playing Sudoku or maybe a crossword puzzle? Anyone who thought you took your role seriously can no longer fool themselves. Mr. Rosenblum, your comments sounded like an irate father disciplining his children. You took arrogance and condescension to a new level. None of the five of you who voted for the NSES, Mrs. Klimkowitz, Mrs. Cavill, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Rosenblum, Mr. McGowan, did anything to honestly address the valid concerns of the speakers or the writers of the hundreds of emails you received. You had your minds made up, showed contempt to the community with your language and your tone, and you displayed utter disregard for the role of a board member. I encourage you to take notes from Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer, who are always respectful to the community, even when they disagree. A civilized society requires its citizens to have debate and discussion on important issues. You five are not capable of this sadly. You obviously only ran for the board to push your own agendas, and you don't care about what's best for kids and families. You pick sex toys over academic excellence every day and twice on Sunday. The relationship this community has with this board majority and the administration is like one that an abused wife has with her tormentor. You lie, you gaslight, you show zero concern. But just like an abused wife who can escape with the help of her friends, so too can this community escape this abusive relationship. The election is just around the corner. You're bullies. You demand an opt-out for the majority instead of an opt-in for the tiny minority who want their kids to learn about anal sex, instead of devoting that time excelling in math or science or art or music. You five have taken the role of board member to a new low. It's past time the community escapes this situation. We need people who take the role of board member seriously, like Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer.
Thank you. Myrna Frankel, please.
Yeah, I'm Myrna Frankel. We've sent all three of our children, our graduates, from 211. One went on to get his doctorate, one went on to get his MD, and the third one went on to get a degree from business from Michigan. I also worked for 16 years at Conant in special ed. I have nothing but respect for 211. I object to one of the speakers as saying that you're not listening to your constituents, and she went on to say what her beliefs were. I'm a constituent. I totally disagree with what she said, and I object to her saying that she speaks for me. Our very first speaker was, I thought, so excellent in asking for respectful dialogue that we would for opposing opinions. What I have just heard in the last five speakers is anything but respectful. That the way these speakers have denigrated you is a shame. I also came to speak about the door hangers that have been put in opposition to your vote on sex ed. They are disgusting, they are pornographic, and they are distributed in the opposition to this sex education. I want to ask the parents of the students, of these parents who are putting these door hangers on, what are they teaching their children, their students, as far as behavior, as far as how to disagree in a civilized society? And I would like to say that I appreciate and approve of your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing on the proposed tax levy. And there are two motions that we'll have. The first recommended action is that in accordance with Section 5/17-1.3 of the Illinois School Code, cash balances are reported in Item 7.0C of tonight's meeting agenda, and the public hearing on the proposed 2022 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now open. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All right, that's a voice, voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. It is open for comments on the public levy. I did not have anyone on the proposed 2022 tax levy. I did not have anyone sign up. If someone would like to speak, the floor is open on the levy. All right, with no one coming forward, then the next recommended action is that the public hearing on the proposed 2022 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now closed. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Again, it's a voice vote, so those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to our next item, which is the post-secondary success presentation. And before we begin that, I'd like to share our mission statement because I think it's really important that we repeat it and we make certain that people are aware of it. And our mission statement is Township High School District 211 serves the needs of our diverse community by providing relevant and rigorous learning opportunities, opportunities for involvement, and strong support systems that empower all students to reach their full potential. So, with that being said, the post-secondary success and the presentation, Dr. Small.
The five-year District 211 strategic plan forward together was approved by the Board of Education six months ago in June. This plan includes goals centered around the priorities of involvement, academic growth, college and career readiness, graduation, wellness, equity, post-secondary success, excellent staff, facilities and finances, and communication. Tonight, we begin a series of updates regarding our progress toward targets for this year. I join you in welcoming Dr. Danielle Hauser, our Director of Student Services, Michelle Napier, Director of College and Career Readiness, and Josh Schumacher, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. They will provide an update on our career pathway exploration.
District 211 is committed to preparing students for their future. We strive to build the following skills in each of our graduates: academic growth, college and career readiness, student involvement, global competitive skills, and wellness. These skills form the foundation of our District 211 strategic plan, which outlines the priorities, goals, strategies, and targets to drive innovative progress over the next five years. The plan was developed by a steering committee comprised of staff, parents, students, community members, and Board of Education members, and covers 10 key priorities, with goals and subsequent indicators, strategies, and targets for each priority. Tonight, we will present information that will complement the report provided in your agenda focused on priority number seven, post-secondary success. This priority includes the goal statement that all District 211 students will engage in preparation and experiences for college and career readiness throughout high school. Specifically tonight, we will share information regarding our progress towards meeting the 2022-2023 targets for Strategies 7.1, Post-High School Planning, and 7.3, Career Development Experiences.
In the corresponding board report, you were provided a summary detailing information about our first target, which is to identify the current materials and methods used by schools to engage students in selecting a career pathway. The first step is to introduce students to an interactive, hands-on interest inventory and personality assessment process. After completing the assessment, students receive real-time personalized listing of careers aligned to the National Career Cluster Framework. If you would see this in person, you would likely see a room buzzed with excitement as they share their results with their classmates and give time to explore, imagine, and dream about their futures after high school. As the years progress, students continue to participate in individual and group activities with their counselors, deepening their conversations about career clusters and post-secondary planning. We want to give you a sense of not just the logistics of how we do this, but an example through the lens of a student experience of what this looks like. So let me introduce you to Emma, a sophomore at Conant High School. From a young age, Emma always had an interest in design. Completing the Zello Interest Inventory confirmed her passion in the arts, AV technology, and communication career cluster. So as a freshman, Emma enrolled in her first class, an introductory of Architecture, Animation, and Engineering Design course. This course introduced her to a variety of technical skills and possible careers within the industry, including architecture. As a sophomore, Emma furthered her knowledge in this area, going more in-depth by enrolling in the second year of this pathway. Emma shared, "I have been thinking about becoming an architect when I'm older, and this has been a great way to see if I could proceed." So during the second year of the Architecture, Animation, and Engineering course, students designed architectural plans for a house using industry-standard software. Each school brings forward the two best designs to the District 211 Architectural Design Competition. And a few weeks ago, this room was filled with students, staff, parents, community members, and business partners as the final 10 students attended the competition. Students presented their designs to a panel of industry professionals and received individualized feedback on their work. This year's winning design was created by Emma. Her winning design will be brought to life through our building construction program as her classmates will make her vision a reality. Emma was so excited to share this moment with her mom and her teacher by her side, sharing with us, "I am so grateful for the district providing something like this, that this is going to allow students to explore their passions." Most architects start building after three years in their program, so to say, "I have a house built as a sophomore," is amazing. This is just one of the many student experiences that are embedded in our career pathways across our district. Our goal is for all students to have this type of individualized plan to help make decisions about career and post-secondary education and training, to plan a course of study, and to make financial aid assessments with their families, all aligned with the Illinois PACE Framework. The more opportunities and experiences offered to students, the more prepared they will feel as they leave high school.
Yes, the key, as Michelle stated, is providing opportunities for all students to participate in career experiences during high school. Career development is the focus of Strategy 7.3. Our first target is to analyze currently available career development opportunities, which are often embedded throughout our curriculum. Experiences can be embedded throughout our curriculum, like Emma's experience, or can be offered to a broader group of students to participate in a career development experience, which builds on what happens in our classroom, but is also available to our students outside of course curriculum. Last month, 75 students participated in a career track which focused on aircraft and facility maintenance with aviation careers. Another experience is scheduled for January. In the American Airlines hangar facility at O'Hare Airport, American Airlines provided a tour of all of the parts of both a large, modern aircraft that flies internationally and a smaller domestic aircraft. Students spent time examining the turbines, the cockpit, and the cargo areas. Students learned about the dangers of weather by exploring a plane with a lot of damage from a recent severe lightning strike. What an amazing opportunity for students, including those who have never had the opportunity to be in an airplane before this event. The president of the Chicago chapter of the Women Professionals in Aviation Society spoke to the students about the industry. As an American Airlines flight attendant, she was inspiring when speaking to the rise in the number of women entering the aviation field. Students learned that American Airlines employs close to 500 mechanics, and approximately 400 of them are in their 50s or older, reiterating the need for young talent in this field, especially as fields are growing. Even more impressive to the students was that they could earn a starting salary between $75,000 and $100,000 after an 18-month training program.
There are several significant pieces of legislation that have provided both the foundation for our past efforts and the groundwork for our current and future efforts. The first, called the Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness Act, or the POWER Act, was passed in 2016 to support Illinois students in preparing for post-secondary education and their future careers. This act provided guidance to school districts, including a Post-Secondary and Career Expectations, or PACE, framework, options for college and career pathway endorsements, and a statewide system for transitional math and English instruction. This spring, Governor Pritzker signed Public Act 102-0917 into law, and this updated legislation centers on the two original components, the PACE framework and the college and career pathway endorsements. The Illinois Post-Secondary and Career Expectations Framework outlines what students should engage in by the end of each grade relative to three key domains. First, career exploration and development; post-secondary education exploration, preparation, and selection; and finally, financial aid and literacy. This framework provides guidance to school districts to organize activities and curriculum for students. Specific recommended activities include taking a career interest survey during Grade Nine, selecting a career pathway within a career cluster of interest in Grade 10, attending a college fair in Grade 11, and completing the FAFSA in Grade 12. The framework and recommended activities are facilitated through the Student Services Office in each District 211 school.
The PACE framework for career exploration and development offered through Student Services can be viewed on a continuum of authentic learning opportunities. One of our targets for 7.3 is to identify the baseline of how many students participate in career development experiences. Students begin with career awareness activities that provide activities leading to self-reflection, understanding, and discussion about possible career clusters and coursework alignment. Career awareness activities also include, but are not limited to, participation in career fairs, such as our Career Expo, technical and military fairs, guest speakers, interactive and video presentations, and career awareness projects completing through coursework. On the continuum, this program has the largest participation of programming that is delivered to all students in group-guided programming and made available during advisories, lunch, or evening programming. Career exploration activities provide opportunities for students to have direct contact with employers or other partners for the purpose of gaining knowledge of one or more industry sectors or occupations. Students begin to learn not just about careers, but interactions of careers within an industry, and participate in experiences related to those careers. Examples of career exploration activities include worksite tours, job shadowing, career-related service learning, mentorship, team-based challenges, and career and technical education student organizations. These activities are offered through our career advisors, student activity, and classroom curriculums. Career development experiences are a defined component of the college and career pathway endorsement. Students must participate in a supervised work experience relating to the student's career of interest. These structured experiences allow students to gain specific learning opportunities focused on developing and demonstrating mastery of the essential employability and technical competency skills related to their career pathway of interest. We continue to collect data on our baseline of how many students participate in each level of our continuum. A number that we would like to highlight tonight, though, is the number of students who earned the college and career pathway endorsement. In October of 2022, the Illinois State Board of Education recognized 596 students and the state's earning pathways endorsements, with 181 graduating from District 211, which is 33% of the endorsements coming from the state from our district. We look forward to growing the number of pathways available for students to earn endorsements in culinary, building construction, manufacturing, and business pathways, as we continue to build the framework and continue to grow our business partnerships.
There are several points throughout a student's high school experience when college and career events are directly communicated to students and parents. These include major opportunities, such as the District 211 College Night or our Career Expo. However, there are many other opportunities that are shared through school announcements, Schoology messages, and other digital communications. During our analysis of these current methods of communication and information provided to students and parents, we have determined that we need to increase the frequency and amount of parent engagement in this process. It is important for us to be partners with our parents throughout the college and career decision process in order to ensure that families have the information necessary to make informed choices.
A combination of platforms are currently used to engage students in identifying potential career pathways. As previously discussed, career development experiences occur on a continuum, including career awareness and exploration activities. The method of how these activities are delivered are provided on this slide. The school counselor, career advisors, and college and career counselors all provide resources to support the students. During in-person, small-group setting or during individual meetings, a software platform, called Zello, allows for students to complete their interest inventory, personality, and skills assessment. The national career clusters are aligned to the result, providing a listing of careers for further exploration. Students can view and document career interests and maintain college and career exploration activities through the District 211 Student Readiness Plan. Students utilize other platforms like Schoology, Infinite Campus, College Board, college websites, emails, parchment, and Common App to manage their college and career process. As we move towards a comprehensive framework and continue to grow opportunities for students to explore careers during high school, our second target is to identify an effective platform for students to explore and record potential pathways during their freshman year.
As the teams explore the materials and methods used to engage students in selecting a career pathway, we recognize that students found themselves navigating several platforms and resources. As we look to industry best practices, a variety of software-as-a-service solution providers are available, offering a comprehensive framework to deliver college and career readiness programming.
Initially, the team started to review five software platforms. Once the top two were identified and reviewed by a team of school counselor, career advisors, college and career counselors, administrators, and technology, we created an overview of two platforms for students to review. Freshmen through seniors at all seven schools were provided generic logins to each of the platforms. The students went through similar activities on both platforms, exploring a high school journey, including career, colleges, financial literacy, and academic planning before making a recommendation of which platform they preferred.
When asking students, "What feature are you most excited to use?", they responded with, "Discovering about colleges that fit your career choice and your financial needs." Great to have the career, college, and high school course planning selections all in one platform. Easy to use and will set you up for everything in the future. The overwhelming majority of students and staff recommended Maya Learning.
The platform centralizes the students' college and career experiences not only from the lens of the student, but from the school counselor. All activities are centralized on the student's dashboard. We would like to review the student experience with you through Maya Learning. Throughout their journey within Maya Learning, students gain exposure to careers and post-secondary pathway options based on their interests, personality, learning style, skills, and values. There are countless careers in post-secondary videos featuring people with diverse backgrounds and experiences, and Maya Learning University search includes 21,000 post-secondary learning institutions around the world, with over 6,700 in the United States. Students can apply filters based on their interests and needs to find the best fit with career clusters, look for trade schools, military options, universities, scholarships, and it will all come together to build their portfolio. Within the platform, students can register for career exploration activities, including career checks, college visits, and financial aid visits. Students can build career plans detailing the paths that interest them, and then the specific steps they'll take to prepare for those steps they have chosen. Personalized academic course plans can be mapped out across their four years and can include career and technical education pathways or post-secondary requirements that the district defines as a roadmap to help students and families navigate. Counselors can assign goals and journal topics to students in groups, allowing personalized responses to those with particular sets of needs. Galleries, experiences, and resumes allow students of all backgrounds and circumstances to tell their unique stories and present their authentic selves to colleges and potential employers. College and career readiness curriculum within Maya Learning ensures that all students have access and guidance through high school and beyond with their planning.
Using the platform, students can document and capture experiences such as community service, employment, clubs and activities, sports, and events outside of school. Then, with a click of a button, the program will generate a resume capturing the student's academic and involvement information. Once students determine which colleges they want to apply to, they can request teacher recommendations, research both national and local scholarships, and write college essays in collaboration with teachers directly through the platform before entering their responses into the Common App. With one login to Maya Learning, students can apply to colleges through Common App and request their transcripts through parchment without ever leaving Maya Learning. Counselors and administrators can run reports to track progress and support planning. Specifically, they can review students' plans and progress and deliver district and school curricula. In addition, they can add to students' post-secondary plans, manage campus visits and events, and build recommended institution lists. Detailed career, post-secondary, and engagement reports can be generated for large-scale school planning of future opportunities. This solution includes a parent portal, 24-hour support, and four years of access to the portal after graduation. We can send a survey to alumni through Maya Learning to gather feedback on District 211's career preparation. Maya Learning incorporates all college and career planning tools into one comprehensive platform. platform.
We will continue to work on finalizing our progress towards meeting the targets for this school year. We believe that we are on schedule to complete all targets in this area by the end of the year. Tonight, we bring to you our recommendation from Strategy 7.1, which is to implement Maya Learning as our software platform that will effectively allow both students and parents to explore college and career options. We will also continue to compile baseline data and evaluate our communication strategies as referenced in 7.3. District 211 staff, led by these two administrators right here, will work to continue on finalizing all the targets for the 2022-2023 school year, and we will continue to provide you with regular updates with progress towards the other strategies, goals, and priorities included in the District 211 Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Open it up for questions. Mr. Dombrowski?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. If we could, could we go to Slide 4? It's different, I think, on the... Oh, I thought there was one that had a linear track for...maybe it's prior? No, it'd be prior, not forward. Okay. Maybe I'm thinking of something else. I think that it was mentioned that senior year meeting or completing the FASA was the goal. I thought I saw that as you were going through the stages, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior.
So that's part of the Illinois PACE framework?
Right. It's requirement under a lot of it, they complete the FASA. Is that the only goal for the seniors?
No. That's just an example.
Okay. That's just an example. Okay, thank you. With regard to the Maya Learning, I noticed 6,700 institutions. There's a lot of numbers in there for post-secondary education. How many careers are listed in that software that do not require a college degree or additional education?
I wouldn't have the exact number of careers, but they have a variety from all of the 16 clusters. So any trade schools or specific...some of the more traditional career, technical education careers are all embedded in there.
So let's say somebody just wanted to enter the trades as a painter. It would be located in there without a trade school reference required to be tied to that?
Correct.
Okay. If you could get those numbers, I'd like to compare that to see how many, you know, non-additional education careers are out there. And then, we have the Common App that allows us to have applications. My children have done that. Is there anything that if somebody's not pursuing, you know, education after high school, to have them build a resume that they can print and send an email? That's within the...is that within the same software or is that different software?
Correct. Same software.
Okay. And our teachers would support their resumes the same as they would their essays?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Ms. Cavell?
As usual, yes. I have some. So, and part of this is going to be referencing, just so that everybody can follow, you know, later on in the meeting, we will have an item specifically pertaining to the Maya software and whether or not the board's going to approve its use. So some of my questions have to do with the fact that the conversations are really linked. Okay, so, you know, I've only been on this board, so it's been three and a half years, and there's been a decent amount of new software platforms that have come before us in that time for various uses. And, you know, like, the pitch sounds great, and I can certainly understand the value of having everything under the one umbrella, you know, just for ease of use, first of all. And the fact that it's obvious that it offers more than what we're currently offering between the variety of things currently in use. My concern is that consistently I hear from community members, parents in particular, that navigating a district this big with this much diversity in course offerings and pathways, and these, you know, these variety of different programs that we offer, is very complicated. And so, though I understand the argument and what this software would do, what I'm hoping to hear is how it would actually make the families who are going to be using this software's lives easier in some capacity. Because I don't want to add yet another wonderful-sounding software platform that's number 16 on the list of software platforms that parents then have to learn how to navigate in order to guide their child successfully through our system. So can you speak to that?
Sure. I can speak to that. And the comprehensive nature of this is without this soft...let's say, right now, without this software package, as a parent, you would have to navigate at minimum four different logins for four different softwares or websites, right? And that would be the minimum if you're just going to explore a career. Currently, we do it through Zello. If you're going to potentially apply for a college, we have work that students do in the Student Readiness Plan, so separate program, separate login. You would go to the Common App, separate program, separate login, and at some point you would go to parchment, all separate. What Maya does, and it's one of the strengths of the program which was identified early on, that's all in one. So as a student, you only log into one platform, you have a nice, student-friendly dashboard that our students are familiar with the technology and how the dashboard is set up. And then, as a parent, you have a portal. So as Dr. Hauser and Ms. Napier did the work, and one of the things I want to commend that they did was actually directly engaging students in this pre-decision and offering students the potential to explore both of them and then getting their feedback. We have the plan for parents. If you are to approve this tonight, one of the things that we're going to do is, starting in January through July then, we have some parent communications and sessions planned to ensure that we are giving clear communications, and that when we do that, it's very easy for a parent to explore it. They understand what their student is going to do on the student end and what they can access and see, and then also encourage conversations at the particular times. So as Mr. Dombrowski said, with the PACE framework, there's different recommended activities each year, so we want to recommend a conversation starter or whatever it is, right? As the student is doing that activity during the school day that the parent can participate in. So consistent with what's in our strategic plan is trying to do a more effective job of this, but bringing all of these pieces that had come into this, our world and the students' world through legislation or just new expectations into a smooth, comprehensive piece for everybody.
Great. You just successfully knocked one of my questions off the list, so good for you, you won a prize. So the next thing that I want to...like, this is a follow-up question. So let's say, let's say, this software is approved and then implemented, and, you know, students who have already had two years with us are going to start this mid-year in the process. You know, understanding that you were explaining it from the beginning to the end, is all existing information going to be migrated over for them? Are they going to...is this going to be a difficult process for a junior who needs to transition into this new platform mid their four-year District 211 experience?
Sure. So we would transition them into the year that they're in, and so we would not expect a junior to go back and complete freshman and sophomore activities. They're really at a different scale. They've already identified their career, potentially, right? Or at least their pathway from the freshman year. So we can plug some of that in, but it's not as smooth all the data goes from the several systems we're using now into this one.
Okay.
So really, we're focused on the freshman experience. That would be the four-year. So not that we're not going to focus on other students, but that will be the focus of the implementation.
My next question, then, does the software deliver its information in multiple languages?
Yes.
And that's an easy-to-use function, I hope?
Yes. All the assessments are offered in English, Spanish, French, Portuguese, Arabic, and Chinese, and the entire platform can move from English to Spanish, and if there's a different language, we can explore that with the vendor.
Like Polish?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Great. You've answered how results are going to be available, so that's great. So, this is a non-software-related question. You know, we have all these internships. We've heard, had a lot of different presentations about our excellent business experiences, whether those be supervised work experiences, mentorships, et cetera. Those have been some of my favorite over this time on the board. My question is, as you're talking about that in a broad way, with an overview of all the different things that we offer, do students have to provide their own transportation in order to make use of those experiences? So let's say a family does not have a car. Are they then limited from doing supervised work experience, or are we able to provide transportation for them to take part in an experience that students with transportation are able to take part in?
So it depends on the experience. As both Dr. Hauser and Ms. Napier stated, there's a continuum of experiences. I would say that most of them, we provide transportation for. A highly specialized experience, for example, I wouldn't even give a for example, right? A highly specialized experience, there are some students that provide their own transportation. One of the things that Ms. Napier is exploring is, how do we close that, close that option and make sure that that's not an option? And so, we're working directly with students now. Our people are really supportive of it, and we continue to look at systematically, can we continue to close that gap?
I mean, I know that we have a squeeze, like, everybody can't find bus drivers, et cetera, and so there's natural limitations to that, but it's so important. I think it's still a really important conversation to have, make sure that students who would otherwise be able to take part in, like, the culinary internships and things that we've talked about, don't have that opportunity for the simple reason that they don't have a car.
Agreed.
So, let's see. My next question, my last one, are all these same experiences that I was just referencing and all of the capabilities of the software available to every single District 211 student, including those in the Alternative Learning Academy, Kirk, North Campus, et cetera, regardless of ability or placement?
Are they currently, or will they be?
Will they be?
Yes.
Okay. So even understanding that students that have IEPs and require information to be delivered in specific ways, they're still have full access to this software suite in accordance with the parameters of the IEP that dictates their educational access, right?
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenblum, Mr. McGowan? Any questions?
I do have a question. You mentioned about access after graduation and an alumni survey. Can you talk a little bit more about that? What would that do, and how can we use that type of information?
Well, I will...so that is 7.2, which we did not cover tonight. That is an upcoming, next presentation update for us. I could answer it for you now, or we could save the excitement for when we come back and talk about 72 and 74. But in short, that's a component of our strategic plan, and that currently is difficult. It's difficult to engage alumni because right now, we have their District 211 email address, and we have them in our classrooms. But once they're alumni, they no longer have that, and we no longer have them in our classrooms. And so, this, the fact that they keep this and they keep their login means that we could continue to communicate with them, and we have some methods in place that we're implementing based on the strategic plan that will allow us to increase our communication. So, that's the short answer.
Okay. That works. I know that there's a number of the parent organizations at basically at all of our schools that are...would like to see more of that so they can still have that connection and then when they have the reunions and things of that nature. So just keeping that, that connection. Thank you. Any other questions? And thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then that takes us to consent agenda items. Is there an item that a board member would like to have removed? Okay. If there is none, then the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had a...oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question. We're auctioning three buses. Usually, we trade those in when we get new buses. Is there a reason we're auctioning versus trading?
We did not trade them in because we were not aware of the timing by which we were going to receive the new buses that came in. We did have the company come back out that normally gets our bus trades and give us a quote, so our plan is to list them. The public auction site that we post them on has buses that are going at a higher rate, so our plan is to list them at that rate, and if we do not sell them, we still have the ability to trade.
Yeah, that was my initial instinct, but thank you for confirming that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Two more bus drivers on the personnel list, I see. So that's great.
That's the good news. All right. Anything else? If there is nothing else, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right. Then that takes us to number eight, which is Freedom of Information Act. That's an information item. And then the next item...are there any questions there? Okay. The next item is the adoption of the 2022 tax levy, and that's going to be in three motions. So the first recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the amount of $251,000, $251,225,000 as the 2022 levy of Township High School District 211. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no...
Yes. I have comments.
Okay.
Here in Illinois, there are two ways to fund schools, through debt or through reserves. That means choosing between keeping overall tax rates lower than required to meet expenses and funding the remainder through debt, or taxing at a higher rate that allows the district to meet its expenses without debt. When we discuss the levy year after year, we often disagree as a board about which approach best suits our community and our schools. I can certainly see the advantages and disadvantages of both approaches. No one I know likes paying taxes, myself included, so comparatively lower overall tax rates, very easy to market. I also think it works reasonably well in a smaller district in a single community like Barrington. If residents accept, that finding the cash for building, maintenance, and other capital improvements means regularly going to referendum and repaying millions in interest. In contrast, funding schools without debt means every dollar we pay in taxes goes to our schools rather than diverting millions to financial servicing firms and lenders. Of course, that also means tax rates are comparatively high, especially when residents look at the tax rates of other communities who use debt. No one likes high taxes, myself included. As a school board member, a parent, a District 15 employee, and a taxpayer, I think about these tensions carefully. Ultimately, I land in a moderate position. In 2020, I asked the administration to run a five-year projection on the financial impact of a flat tax. The result was that our district couldn't pay the bills within five years without issuing debt, which you can think of like a taxpayer-funded credit card. At the same time, I am just as uninterested in levying the maximum allowable tax rate every year with no consideration for the overall affordability of housing or accumulating cash reserves in district coffers. If I wanted to live in a community like that, I'd move to California. I support the levy as proposed because it too reflects a moderate approach, though reasonable people can disagree about what that means. It rejects the recklessness of both extremes, respects our community members who demand and expect diverse program offerings, and well-maintained schools and highly qualified staff without wasting hard-earned income on high-interest rates or resource hoarding reserves.
Thank you. Dr. Small, would you like to add anything to this, or...
I can do a very quick, brief summary.
Please.
That this first motion is the approval of the levy. The maximum property tax extension limit, the PTAL, is the 5% plus .3 for new property growth. The recommended increase over last year for this motion is 3.5% plus .3% of new property growth.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right. If there are none, then roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The motion carries. All right. The second recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the certification required by 35 ILCS 200/18-190.7, that the 2022 real estate tax extension of the Board of Education is less than the maximum allowed under the property tax extension limitation law. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion. Dr. Small?
If I can summarize this motion, the second recommended action is to approve the certificate with the county that District 211 has approved a levy that is less than the maximum amount allowed by the property tax extension limitation law. This action in motion two allows the board to have the option of recapturing the amount not levied for the next three years, as long as the total levy does not exceed the 5% increase over the prior year. prior year. This action in motion two does not require the board to use the look-back, recapture law, but is a necessary step to have on file with the county for the board to have that option in the future.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, if there are none, then may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. That takes us to the third recommended action, that the Board of Education approve the resolution abating the full 2022 recapture real estate, real estate tax levy amount certified by the Cook County Treasurer due to Section 18-233 of the Property Tax Code as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, discussion. Dr. Small?
This third action is to abate the full 2022 recapture real estate tax levy amount certified by the Cook County Treasurer, and provide that amount as full tax relief back to the taxpayers. The amount currently listed by Cook County is $4,772,584. If the board does not approve this action, the taxpayers will automatically be required to pay the district the $4,772,584,000 in addition to the levy.
Any comments or questions? Okay, if there are none, then roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski? Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And the motion passes. All right, thank you. That takes us to new business, and it's the, the recommended action is that the Board of Education acknowledges receipt of the June 30, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, which includes the financial statements as prepared by Township High School District 211 and audited by Baker Tilly US LLP Certified Public Accountants. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion, and Dr. Small?
In accordance with the requirements of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, the district is required to have an independent audit of its financial records, including a test of financial controls completed on an annual basis. The firm of Baker Tilly US LLP recently completed the audit of the district's financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2022, and have issued an opinion thereon. The district's 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, referred to as the ACFER, was prepared by Baker Tilly in cooperation with our business office. I am pleased to introduce to you Audit Partner Michael Malat, who is here this evening on behalf of the board's accounting firm, Baker Tilly. Mr. Malat will present the Board of Education with a brief review of the audit this evening.
Great. Thanks for having me, everybody, this evening. I will only spend a couple of minutes, because I know you got a long meeting. First, before I get started, I just want to thank Barb and Lauren and your business office for their assistance in the audit process. I know I mention this every year, but without the highly skilled and capable people that you have working for the district, the audit doesn't get done smoothly, effectively, efficiently, or on time. Particularly in recent years, with the significant amount of turnover at a lot of school districts, a lot of districts have not weathered the storm and have had late audits. You guys continue to be on track and on time every year. Barb and Lauren deal with us and all our questions and all our requests throughout the course of doing their regular day-to-day business as well, and I just really want to thank them for all the effort they put in. You really do have a great team that works for the district and something to be proud of. As I get started, I'll just run through the various reports that we issued. It's kind of a high level, and if you have any questions, obviously, just let me know. The big document, as always, is that ACFER. It's a beast. I always recommend that if you're going to look at it, you know, not in detail, but your biggest bang for your buck is going to be in that management discussion and analysis section, as well as the transmittal letter. They provide a combination of both financial and non-financial information. They give you a good, high-level picture of what happened during the year, and some historical context as well. There's trend information in the back, too, so if you want to see what happened before, to where things are now on a number of different, both financial and non-financial, like, demographic metrics, it kind of gives you a good picture of where things have been and where they're going. On the report itself, it is all your information. The only information that comes from us, kind of our voice, is that three- or four-page independent auditor's report opinion. What that is, is basically us saying that we've evaluated the information in your ACFER and said that it's materially accurate, and we can provide what's called an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance we can provide. Long story short, that means we don't look at every dollar, every penny, but the information there gives you a true and accurate depiction of where the district's financial health is, so you can rely upon that information when you guys are making decisions from a financial perspective, as well as other readers of financial statements, understanding where the district's financial health is as of June 30. Only a couple of things just to note that are a little different this year. There was a new standard one into effect. It's not a major one, at least for you guys, but the way lease arrangements are recorded is changed for the district. That means all those cell tower leases, where you have the phone companies come in and put various equipment on your lights and buildings. In the past, you recorded that as cash-in, is when it came in. Now, it's showing up as a receivable. It's recognized when those agreements kind of occur, and some different accounting related to that, some new information related that's in there. So if you're looking at it in more detail, you might see some new information related to that. I'm going to just call it out in our opinion, so just want to point that out. Another thing I'm pointing out, really, to everybody this year, is the pension-funded status. It's kind of at the peak on this report, because that information is kind of stale, if you will. The municipal IMRF pension fund, that says the 123121. The TRS, the Teachers' Retirement System, that information says of June 30, 2021, when the markets were strong. 2022, obviously, has had significant financial downturn, or significant downturn in the markets, which means investment values are going down, which means all the pensions are seeing declines in their, in their values of the holdings they have. So you're seeing IMRF being overfunded at 123%, TRS at about 45%. We'll expect to see those numbers going down next year. What that means, over the course of time, as the market continues, and it's whatever path it's going on, could result in the next couple of years, some increase in the percentage of contributions you're required to make to the plans. Takes a couple of years for those to hit, but just something to keep an eye out for going down in, you know, not necessarily 2023, but in 2024 and 2025 even. You'll see some of those ramifications, whereas we're seeing the positives right now in lower rates, generally speaking, in terms of contributions. You're going to see that go up. So just something we're pointing out, because it's kind of a bit of a disconnect because of the timing there. So just something to be cognizant of. Really, other than that, you know, you guys have seen the numbers. You get reports from your finance office, so I won't get into any more detail than the numbers. But the long story short on the ACFER itself, is we provide a clean opinion, meaning you can rely on the information in there. Some of the other reports that we issued and worked with you guys on, first is the ICCB report. So some of the various adult education grants you get from the state, we're required to do certain work around that, to ensure that not only that it's spent on the right programs, but there's some other compliance requirements related to attendance and the programs put on, and a number of other things that ICCB requires us to evaluate. Glad we provided a clean opinion on that, on those programs, so we had no findings related to that. Additionally, we spend a lot of time on your federal expenditures, called the single audit. This year, the program we looked at was the Child Nutrition Cluster, which includes lunch, breakfast, all the different things you guys do from a food service perspective. And we, again, similar to the ICCB, probably even in more depth, we don't not just look at your spending of that dollars, but we also look at how your processes and controls around those programs are, are done to mitigate risk, ensure that you're doing everything in compliance with federal requirements, and we have no findings related to the program that we tested this year. Couple other reports from a statutory perspective, the ISBE Annual Financial Report. It's basically a regurgitation of the financial information in a lot of ways that is in the ACFER, with some other information included as well. The key thing to note in there is your financial profile score, which is a calculation ISBE does based upon your financial health, and you have a score of 4.0, as you've had in previous years, which is the highest score that you can get. So that's great to see. We also issued an opinion on that to make sure that it kind of speaks to the ACFER, that the information in both of those reports are consistent with each other. One of the other statutory requirements is what's called the CIFER. It's the Government Accountability and Transparency Unit. For school districts, it's, it is somewhat redundant, because you already have ISBE's report, then there's another state agency or corps, there's another report that's being finalized right now, and we'll have a clean opinion on that when it's issued, probably early next week. The last document that is issued, so all these other documents relate to how the district performed, what happened, and what the results were of that. The last document is that results in insights letter, which is really truly just us communicating to you as the board, as a governing body, how the audit went, giving you information on what our responsibilities are, what management responsibilities are, what our plan is from a very high level. The good news on that letter is boring is good, and it is a boring letter this year. So really, it's just a lot of required communications, no significant control issues, no, you know, disagreements with management, no really major items that we identified during the course of the audit that we were not expecting, which is good. That, those letters, when they get interesting, that's not a good thing. So it is really clean. It really hits all the current required communications to you on the results of the 2022 audit. The one, a couple of other things I'll point out really quick in there, there is a page in the electronic version with a link to our website that has resources for the board. Some of it is pertinent, some of it is not. It rotates and changes on a regular basis. So if you want to check out some of that stuff, it's not just accounting-related. It provides things related to all sorts of things that kind of fall in the purview of your governance. So if you're interested, we want to make sure that's available to you to look at from time to time. So the link is in there to the website that provides that information. And then the last thing is, one of the final pieces of that letter is communication, not just the results of this year's audit, but in advance of next year's audit, some of the requirements that we're required to let you know about. And really, the key thing is reminding you that while we work with Barb and Lauren on an annual basis, we really work for you. You are who engage us and hire us to complete the audit, and we report to you like I do tonight. But we like to make sure that you're aware that we're always available. It's not just this annual kind of conclusion of the audit, but if there's ever any time that comes up where you have a question, concern, just want to know a little bit more, we're always available. You know, Lauren and Barb know exactly where to find me at all times, so if there's ever any time you want to have a conversation with us, we're always available, and want to make sure you guys are aware of that. With that, if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
Mike, thank you for joining us tonight, and congratulations to you and your family. I know you have a new addition that just arrived last week.
Yep, thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you very much. And thank you to Lauren and to Barb Peterson. They always answer our questions. They provide us with the materials that we need for, for board, and even when we throw questions at both of those ladies, they come back and they give us the answer, you know, whatever is asked. So thank you to our ladies, and thank you for our auditors. Thank you for the report. All right. Okay, so if there's no other questions, then we need a roll call. Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to our operating fund balance for the period ending June 30, 2022. It's an information item. Then that takes us to, if there's no question, the next item is the 2021-2022 Popular Annual Financial Report of the Board of Education Funds. That's, again, an information item.
Dr. Small?
While the ACFER that we just heard about, under Agenda Item 10A, includes the information required with a complete audit, we have, again, prepared for the board and our community a Popular Annual Financial Report, or a PAFER, to facilitate informed understanding in a different format than the ACFER. Once again, the auditors expressed their high praises, we just heard, for the quality of work conducted by members of their business team, and I would also like to express our thanks to Barb Peterson, Sandy Imes, Lisa Ochoyo, and Lauren Hummel for their diligent and highly accomplished work to conduct the review of our finances, to produce the ACFER, as well as Erin Holmes, the Director of Communications, and her team, as they help with the design of the PAFER.
Any questions, or any, okay, if there are none, then we move on to the student-user fees introduction, and that's an information item. Dr. Small?
This is the introduction to the fee structure for District 211 for the 23-24 school year. There is no action tonight, only information in preparation for the January meeting, where the board will then take action on the fees for the upcoming school year. As a reminder, the board has not changed, charged the $170 textbook instructional fee for the past two school years.
Okay. Any questions? All right, if not, then we'll move on to the facility assessment and asset management plan proposal. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve our con to complete a facility assessment and asset management plan at a cost of $206,820. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Small?
The strategic plan under the facility enhancements of Goal 9 has a target for this year that includes the engagement of an architect and the development of a 10-year master facility plan. The recommended action tonight to allow the completion of the facility assessment and asset management plan allows the district to evaluate the conditions of its facilities to plan for future maintenance and replacement. A facility assessment would include things such as the exterior grounds, including sidewalks, curbs, and drives, and athletic fields, the building envelope, including roofs, walls, and windows, interior items such as floor systems, walls, doors, ceiling systems, mechanical equipment, plumbing systems and fixtures, and lighting levels and fixture conditions, as well as an analysis of power infrastructure adequacy and distribution. The facility assessment will help the district determine where best to invest its resources over the next decade. The facility assessment will also incorporate a life expectancy projection and replacement cost for years 1 through 10.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam President. Was, was this bid, did we solicit more than one bid for this work?
No, this was not bid. This is through our architect of record, who has complete history and inventory of our facilities on file.
Madam President, when was the last time the district had an independent set of eyes or a different opinion than the standing architect of record?
I can't give you that answer at the moment. I would have to direct from Dr. Small or from Lauren.
We've had this architect for, I don't know the number of years, a long period of time. We have used other, depending on what the nature of the project is, we will bring in additional support teams to, to assist them in whatever the planning and development is. This is a recommendation, though, with our existing firm.
Let me ask this question. Is this, how often would we be doing something like this, or is this?
Well, ideally, this would be completed and not updated any sooner than 10 years. Ideally, it would go beyond that, but it is really, and the desire is to have a full inventory of our system. So this is, you know, a full inventory of all of the sections of our roof with their associated age, the condition as they are today, with the estimated replacement date and cost, as an example. This provides us with budgeting and planning tools. It certainly assists us with areas of our building that fall under the health and life safety components, and provides us with timing to be able to complete those necessary items. It allows us to be proactive in the replacement of our mechanical systems that serve the safety of our facilities. And it's also a document that is provided that is a source of continuity between any individual that's utilizing it. So whether it's central staff, if it's our maintenance staff within our buildings, the building and grounds manager, it's a document that provides a complete set of inventory and information for those individuals who will be managing the facilities.
Thank you.
And just to continue discussion, Madam President, I believe it's always good to, every now and then, provide a fresh set of eyes to ensure that maybe something that is systematically, redundantly omitted, whether just through an experience or a different focus, that, that the district should take opportunity to, to provide just verification occasionally with, with a fresh set of eyes in this type of exercise.
Noted. Thank you.
Can you explain to me, just a little, speak to the, we just had discussions, not six months ago, about replacements of various things, and I specifically remember presentations regarding the lifespan of roof replacement projects. So can you speak to, and, you know, you mentioned life and safety projects as well. You know, if we already have some of this information, why do we need the same information again?
We do have some information. This is a way to expand upon the information that we have and do a complete review of our systems. This goes more beyond level of the pieces of equipment that are within our school and the last date of replacement. It's a, it's an assessment of the pieces that we have to provide more of a comprehensive review of where they fit within our long-term plan. This is a very important component for us to ensure that our financial projections are accurate with regard to the financial resources that we're allocating toward our, our building management systems that we maintain.
Okay, I understand. I also understand this specifically directed as part of the strategic plan, you know, I, so I- So I understand all of that. I do agree that the next time something like this comes around, I would prefer to see a bid process. And if this architect is a longstanding client of ours, then they can participate in that process, too.
I have some comments in that. I know Archon has been a longstanding architect for our school district. However, I concur with Mr. Dombrowski that I would, that it seems that doing a facility survey and assessment doesn't necessarily have to be the architect of record that we've had for some time. I'm sure they have many records of different things that we've done over the years with them, but this should be, even for them, an opportunity to come in and do a fresh survey and evaluation, it says right here, of the conditions of our facilities and possible future maintenance that may be needed. And I question whether our architect of record needs to be the one and only capable organization to come in and do a facility assessment and help us identify opportunities for different things with regards to their, to doing improvements and life expectancy projects. So I guess a question I have, I know it says on here that it can begin as early as next week and be done over nine months. Is this something that we need to approve? I know it's in the strategic plan, but the strategic plan doesn't have, doesn't say that, or does it say that this has to be approved in December? Or is this something that we can postpone and allow other architectural firms to propose to us they're doing this same assessment over nine, 10, 11 months? Or shorter, if they can?
Can you speak to that, either Dr. Small or Lauren, in regards to that?
I believe that the strategic plan says that it's a priority for this year. There is not a specific month that is tied to the approval of it. Our thought in the timeline is that, as I mentioned, it takes roughly, or it's anticipated to take roughly nine months to complete, which gets us to ultimately, our goal is to present a final report to the board in September of next year, so that it provides us, that's about the window of time where we would start planning for that following summer's work. So that would, that's kind of where we backed into this timeline to be able to allow us to have additional information to help guide that decision-making process. But there is nothing specific in the strategic plan with regard to the month.
What, if the board, just as a hypothetical, if the board were to say, we would instead prefer to send this out for a bid, I think it's important, given the time constraints that you just said, in terms of our overall goal, how long you would anticipate, knowing that it is a guess, on that process taking?
Well, I would say that we would do an RFP versus a bid for this process. It would take us a few weeks to put it together. It would need to be out for several weeks for someone to be able to respond to, and then time for us to evaluate and interview. So conservatively, I would say three months without talking to other vendors to see how much time they would exactly need.
All right. Then, oh, Ms. Cavill?
I apologize. So the proposal to complete the full study and prepare the final plan document is $206,820,000. Considering that it is a nine-month process, and we'd also be paying for experience, I'm less concerned about the financial aspects of it. I'm more concerned that, I think it's good for the architect to compete against other services out there if they've had a longstanding relationship with us. And giving opportunity for new people with new eyes is also important. So I understand that if we did the bidding, you know, that is not an insignificant delay. So I don't know. It's a, like everything else that comes before us, it's a balancing act, isn't it?
I have a question, and maybe that would help us, you know, kind of make a decision here. What exactly would Archon be doing? Are they walking through our buildings? Are they looking at the blueprints of things that have been done? What exactly would they be doing and looking and...
It's a little bit of both. So one of the benefits to Archon providing the service is that they have a springboard to be working from because they have a full inventory of our systems and have a good understanding of our buildings with regard to just their general layouts and materials, what's, you know, the structural components of our roofs and things like that that may not be as apparent to the eye as someone is doing a physical inspection. So they, there will be reviews of plans, there will be reviews, there will be a physical walkthrough of every square foot of our buildings. We've discussed how that would take place with them, either during off-school hours or days where the district is completely closed, when they can easily get into spaces to be able to do the physical inspection components of it. We've talked about various testing, infrared testing, bore, you know, some borings and things like that, where they could test fields, those types of components that could also be done as examples to things that are not apparent to the, you know, just to the eye as they're doing an inspection.
Do you think this is a reasonable fee? Or any idea whether it might be reasonable, too high, too low, right in the middle? Any idea?
The fee is less than 10 cents per square foot. You know, for a nine-month study, it, you know, I cannot say how it compares to others, but that's approximately what the cost is per square foot.
So it sounds like the answer is no. You don't know if it's reasonable compared to perhaps other architectural firms doing the same service?
Yeah, that's what I said, is that I do not know what the comparable services would be.
Dr. Small, I know we have our facility director here. Can we ask him to shed some more information?
Sure. If you have some specific questions that Lauren can't answer, or Ricky would like to add to, absolutely.
Does the board have any questions of...
Maybe Mr. Dombrowski can shed some additional light as an engineer on the board and perhaps some experience he's had at this type of work.
My question is simply, this is independent of our life safety study, correct?
It is.
Right. And Archon typically performs our life safety study as well?
They have historically, correct?
Right. And we haven't had another architectural firm in for the life safety studies?
I am not aware of one, at least not in my time in this role, no.
Right. Again, my point still stands about, you know, making sure that you don't have the fox watching the hen house and providing a second independent study to verify that we're getting the services that we expect at our district.
I wouldn't go, Madam President, I feel, my feeling is more that, I mean, you know, if we were to send this out, you know, to hear from competitive, to get competitive bids back, essentially, I mean, it, you know, like other bids that we've had before, this might be the only person that comes back with the service. You know, at the same time, we might get a few. So I don't think, you know, if this board were to say, we're going to go a different route instead of doing this tonight, we're going to accept the minimum three-month delay and go ahead and send this through that process, that doesn't automatically mean that we're going to end up with, you know, in a different place. You know, we might, we might go with this original firm. So I just, I don't want to speak, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, because it feels like, yet again, we're having like two competing discussions at the same time. So I think at this point, I don't know, I feel like the discussion's kind of covered everything, and if, you know, we're either going to vote this up or down, or if, you know, I'm not as familiar with Robert's Rules of Order as other people on here, does this motion need to be voted up or down before then a replacement motion is made?
We can amend this, but what I would probably suggest is either voting it up or down. The only thing I would throw in is, if this is Archon's bid, we've just made it public.
Yeah, that's true.
So I don't know if that is a determining factor in there. So, and if they come back with a lower bid, are they then being, you know, honest with us in regards to this, or are they trying to, you know, secure our bid? That's the only thing I'm wondering about, because everything has just been made public now. So we can, we can vote this down, and then we can direct the board to go out for bid for this, if that's the decision, or we can vote in favor of this. Dr. Small, you were going to say something?
If I may, I hear a concern about the use of Archon. What I would suggest is that one thought of consideration is to secure Archon to do this, get this asset and management plan in place based on some of the things you have already said as a board, and then look at the picture behind the future in terms of what we do with our architects and who we hire and how we work with them.
So Mike, so just to clarify, my comments are not in concern of Archon, okay? I'm sure, and I've dealt with them in other ways, that they're a very, very professional and prestigious architectural firm that we've successfully used for quite some time. But I also think that things such as this don't necessarily have to be given to our architecture of record because they're the architecture of record. And I feel like that's kind of an easy way out, and I feel like that's what we're doing here, is because we already have them, let's give it to them and have them do it.
Lauren or Ricky, I don't know if you can speak to this. The difference between, for this particular project that we're looking at, the difference between having the current architectural firm that has been in our facilities for multiple years versus a brand-new one coming in? Have any experience, or please?
Could you repeat your question?
So the difference between having, for this one project that we're talking about, the difference between, is there a difference between having an architectural firm that comes in that has been in our buildings and our facilities for multiple years versus an architectural firm that had, was new to our district for this project?
Well, in my, in my opinion, I think there's a big difference. When you have someone who knows your facilities inside and out right now versus someone that doesn't know your facilities, it's going to take them an extended, longer amount of time to learn it. And I think because of that, the cost will increase. That's based on my experience. I went through this process before at other institutions, and that's my experience, is that the architect on record usually goes through the process a little bit shorter timeframe. And one other thing, when it comes to architectural services and lawyer services, these falls under the category of professional development, I mean, professional services, which doesn't necessarily have to be bidded out.
I'm sorry, it doesn't have to be what?
Bidded.
Thank you. Any questions?
Which is why there was a, the discussion was surrounding a request for proposals on that.
I think ultimately where I'm going to land is that, you know, I'm not, I, they've not given us any reason to suspect, you know, there's no evidence of wrongdoing. And, you know, I think in this day and age, a lot of us have forgotten to offer one another even just the bare minimum of grace. So I'm not going to devolve and make decisions based on unfounded suspicion and malignment. So my concern, you know, the price is reasonable, especially for the scope of the work. The arrangements have been made. We've had a trustworthy relationship with them before. Ultimately, I am comfortable with the motion as presented. However, in the future, I think obviously there's some concern about the process. And at least I personally can only speak for myself. Now, I don't mean that as a malignment of this firm or a malignment of your supervision of this process. That's not what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is that I think for transparency's sake in the future, services such as this, I would like to see more information come through, perhaps a bidding process likened to other professional services, or at least competing quotes, perhaps even next time a presentation from the firm itself to answer these sorts of questions, so that you're not blindsided at a board meeting, if that makes sense. I think that's where I'm ultimately going to come down on this discussion for tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to add that if we're not looking at doing this for another 10 years, I don't see a three-month delay being significant. And it's not a disparaging comment to Archon, it's just simply that we would be provided with additional value by having the experience and additional viewpoints of a second architect in our facilities, and not necessarily saying that Archon isn't professional and doing their due diligence, just that two sets of eyes are better than one.
Any other comments or questions? All right. If not, may I have a roll call, please? Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, the motion passes, and I think, as has been discussed and brought forward, and Ms. Cavill put it, summarized it quite well, we're looking at maybe going for bids on other items, so we can have some choices and discussion.
And we can talk through certainly the request for proposal process, the bid process, and then understanding of that also.
Okay. And I think that's, that's important. Thank you. All right. So the next item is the time and place for the regular Board of Education meetings, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education schedule recommended board meetings in the G.A. McElroy Administration Center to begin at 6:30 p.m. for the purpose of entering closed session, with the public portion of the board meetings beginning at 7:30 p.m. for Thursday, July 20, 2023; Thursday, August 17, 2023; Thursday, September 21, 2023; Thursday, October 19, 2023; Thursday, November 9, 2023; Thursday, December 14, 2023; Thursday, January 25, 2024; Thursday, February 22, 2024; Thursday, March 21, 2024; Thursday, April 25, 2024; Thursday, May 16, 2024; and Thursday, June 30, 2024. Further, that the board secretary be directed to post proper notice. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
As we've had discussion before, has there been any conversation and/or collaboration with our feeding school districts regarding their board meeting schedules and any that may potentially be in direct conflict or overlap with ours?
District 15 has their board meetings on a different date, and District 54 has not officially put forth any other dates, but I have opened the conversation with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right. And the next item, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve an initial six-month implementation agreement with MEA Learning at a cost of $15,862.50 and a five-year term agreement beginning in July 2023 at a cost of $68,975 per year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So if I'm, just to clarify, if I'm reading this correctly, there's essentially a six-month, you know, what I'm going to call a trial period. And then the five-year term agreement would begin in July, and so there is time for the board to review before?
No, it's not a...
Explain what the six-month is.
Sure. It's not a trial period. It's an implementation period, which, as we mentioned before, will allow us to... will allow us to engage our parents in the parent communications and pieces that we'd like to. It will allow our counselors to become familiar with the system and be trained on it and be ready to go prior to the start of the school year rather than trying to do all that in, in August.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for the future expense reimbursement for Anna Klimkowitz and Steve Rosenbloom to attend the EdRed Legislative Dinner Meeting, January 23rd, 2023, as submitted. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that takes us to potential topics for future discussion, and I did have one from Ms. Cavill. Would you like to share it?
I have one, potentially two now. So the first one that I want to bring forward is I want to request that policy J F C D, which is a policy regarding academic dishonesty, be reviewed by the Policy Committee to explain to my fellow board members why I'm requesting such a thing. I want to make sure that our policy covers every sort of academic dishonesty, including AI-produced and AI-generated speech and text in particular. Because, you know, technology changes so fast and is ever-evolving, just in the last several weeks, I think the landscape for what various AI-generated software can produce, chatbots specifically, in this case, I'm referring to ChatGPT, requires such a review to make sure that our students understand that they should be, they're expected to produce original work.
Dr. Small, any thoughts or comments? If that's in agreement with the board for that policy to be reviewed, Dr. Small?
Certainly, the Policy Committee can look at it and make sure that the language is updated to reflect the current environment our students are living in.
Okay, thank you.
And the next one, I want to specifically respond to some.
Oh, is, I'm sorry, is there consensus of the board?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I jumped the gun.
Consensus?
Yes.
Is it to add? I'm unclear because I heard two things. One was to add it to the board agenda and one was to send it to the Policy Committee.
No one ever asked for it to be added to the board agenda. I only asked that it be sent to the Policy Committee.
Oh, I thought that's what the new business was about, adding it for an agenda. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Sure.
It'll eventually come to, to the board then. So, all right, thank you. You said you had something else?
Yes, you know, regarding some public comment, comments made about a rule regarding the foreign exchange student. You know, I looked at policy J E C B A, but I couldn't find the language referenced in the public comment. So before I ask for a policy review, I want to ask Dr. Small to respond to that specific language about the rule regarding when you turn 17.
Yes, so I will look into the procedures behind that. The, I had reached out to the, our parent in terms of what the specifics were. I did not receive any, but I will certainly have a conversation with her to follow up as well as the school in terms of who she's been working with and what's been happening. I will give you just some background in terms of our foreign exchange students' procedures. We have been doing this for years. We have had extremely successful ones, and we have had sometimes a pattern of some unsuccessful ones. And typically, our procedures are put in place to ensure that we've done everything we can on our hand to ensure that this, the experience is successful for everybody involved. She did mention a, a company, we do require, as you would have seen in the policy, that the companies are pre-approved in terms of the ones that we allow our, our parents to work with should they choose to want to engage in the foreign exchange process. It is a long process and it is a, a intense process as, as the parent did describe. They do have to start early because there's obviously a lot involved when you're having a foreign student come over and engage in a semester or a full year of education here without their parents.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, as I understood it, state law requires that we provide an education to any student regardless of status, whether they're on a visa or undocumented or any. So I don't think it would be, if I'm understanding correctly, I don't think the, the limitation's on our end because Illinois state law requires that. It would be a limitation outside of us?
I will have to look into what visas we're talking about because there are multiple different types of visas.
Right, but state law doesn't allow us to restrict based on any standing as far as citizenship or visa goes.
So my question was about specifically the language referenced in the public comment about the rule cited by the parent about when the student turns the appropriate age. So that's the information that I'm seeking.
So I can get the board additional information?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Right.
You know, if, I don't know if those comments suggest that there's also a need to have a legal opinion about the issues raised by Mr. Dombrowski, you know, I don't know. You know, in terms of potential topics for future discussion, I was asking about a very specific issue. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
What I would ask is, let's allow Dr. Small to take a look at it and provide us with some information in regards to that, if that's.
Yeah, that's what I'd like.
And I know we have, want to make certain that all of our students or whatever student comes here has an appropriate education.
Yep.
So let's find out what all of the details are in regards to that. So she will get that for us, please.
I agree, and also there's a second policy, J E C B A dash R1, immediately following that, that lists the various programs that are approved foreign exchange programs. And I, and perhaps, Dr. Small, in your investigation, you may discover perhaps that the organization that she's working through may have something impacting that and not necessarily our school district. But I'm very glad that she brought it to our attention so we could look into it further and try to help the situation get resolved. So.
Okay.
I agree.
All right.
And then finally, to, to this portion of the new business, prior to making a, a request to add I I A A back on, on the agenda, because I know we've, we've discussed that in the past. But Dr. Small, when you respond to Ms. Gail's questions, can the board receive a copy of that, that response as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? And again, I, I appreciate, and I know we've got our, our agreements that we did, you know, it's appreciated that there's a heads up if somebody has a potential topic. So thank you for that. All right, that takes us to our committee reports. The first one is N S S E O. And with N S S E O, our, our students that we recognize were from the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and both are seniors at high school. One's at high school 214 and one is at 207. Both of the young ladies that were recognized are involved in their school. They've got wonderful grades. They've participated in Leadership Day at Sunrise in October. And then they take the information that they, or things that they've learned and bring that back to, to their school. One of the things that we learned about the Deaf and Hard of Hearing program, they have participated in, in '21, '22, there were 350 students that participated in diagnostic services. And 42 students are in the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Satellite Programs. They gave a presentation where they were focusing on math instruction in the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Programs to, to help those students. And that the difference in the age of diagnosis, the access to visual language, and the degree of hearing loss all plays a factor in how the student is progressing and what they're able to do. So they gave a, a very good presentation in regards to that. Also, the, Dr. Hackett gave us some information on the state. Dr. Ayala is going to be retiring in February of 2023. So there's discussion in regards to that, taking a look at the last four years of how everything has aligned with the state and the pandemic and how things need to be going forward. We're also, need to recognize Renee Erickson because she was named as Transition Committee Chairman to the I A A S E Board. And I don't remember what those initials stand for.
I'm not sure I know them off the top of the head, but I can tell you what she's going to do. She's a part of the board that will work through with our students. We have an excellent transition program in terms of them moving from their education into their adult life. And she was named a part of that, and we will be in a wonderful resource as a district for sharing our ideas of the success that we've had in that arena.
Yep, and congratulations to Renee. That is awesome. We also had from N S S E O, Dr. Brad Carter, served on the EdRed Special Education Funding Committee. And he's also provided some information to, to EdRed and continues to be a source of information. Dr. Doug Bolton, he gave a presentation to the PERC parents, and it was extremely well-received. He shared a really strong message of resilience in the efforts that have been going on after the post-pandemic. And he had wonderful interaction with, with the parents there from PERC. So that, oh, we've also heard from Hyatt Young and Atia. They completed the survey in regards to the superintendent search, and they gave us the list of desired characteristics. And the main focus is, we really need a person with a special education background to lead N S S E O. Dr. Hackett has done a tremendous job, a marvelous staff, you know, really working together. They've been very good. So we need to have that continue. We've been told that there are already a couple of applications that have come in. The goal will be that the applications, I believe, need to be in probably by mid-January. And then we'll take a look at those and start scheduling some interviews. So that is N S S E O, and that will take us to EdRed.
Thank you, Madam President. EdRed had their December meeting on December 2nd, and Dr. Small and, and Mrs. Hummel were both also in attendance. I'm going to go through, they, they talked about some legislative things, and so I'm just going to touch base on a few that particularly may be of interest. The SAFE Act, as it's called, one thing on there is that it allows schools to physically, school districts to have someone physically removed if they're considered trespassing. So that was a little bit of a change. There was discussion, there was some presentation and, and conversation around the school voucher program. And it's called, it's, here in Illinois, it's called Invest in Kids is the name of that program. It is scheduled to sunset in December 2023. And EdRed is advocating to keep the sunset as scheduled, to let that program expire. And essentially, what it does is it allows taxpayer money to go to private and chartered schools. So as a supporter of public education, they're very much in favor of having that, that expire. There was some discussion around new arrivals and immigrants to our community and schools. And EdRed is advocating with legislators to really encourage assistance for those individuals. The next meeting is February 10th. And, but before that meeting is the Legislative Dinner. And thank you to my colleagues on the board for approving mine and Mrs. Klimkowitz's expenses to attend that dinner on January 23rd at the, in Oak Brook. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is the Administrative Board Policy Group Report. We're looking at four policies, and one of them is the electronic devices. And that will come back before, it'll be the first reading next month at our January board meeting. Okay, and then that takes us to Community and Family Services Report. Mr. Dombrowski or Mr. McGowan?
Go ahead, sir.
I attended the November 21st P O C meeting to the South. Jonathan with Greater Family Health provided information on the Drag Bingo event that's being hosted as an adult-only event Wednesday, January 25th. Heather from The Bridge is taking referrals for counseling for 11- to 15-year-olds. They're looking for youth mentors for Palatine Township. Claudia from the Schonberg Library reported out on the, the start of the One Book, One Community. The, the book is This Tender Land. In February, there'll be a visit with the author at the Prairie Center. Ken from Church of the Cross mentioned that the Closed Closet is open, and it's been expanded to children. Traditionally, they've, they've only provided the Closed Closet for adults, but Lakeview no longer has the, the child program, so they're, they're providing that. And Monica with ECC said they're enrolling new students for high school equivalency and that they've filled up with English as a Second Language classes. So that's kind of the latest report.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Equity Report. I was able to attend, it's November, it was November 14th. And I love when we have the kids because they, they just offer a whole wonderful perspective. Part of the discussion was regarding course request process. And the groups were divided by parents, students, and the teachers that were there. And some of the points that parents brought up, they would like to be included in the selection of the classes a little bit more. There was a discussion of students being placed in higher level or lower level classes, and sometimes maybe the need of looking at students' abilities need to be examined a little more. They also discussed new and transfer students. And maybe is there, how do you get those students in? And how do we work with them on getting them on a career path? Some parents would like more input. Some parents wanted a little bit less, so looking at what the balance is. And the suggestion was, you know, communication. Let the parents, the parents are asking that the counselors let them know when they're meeting with the students. They'd like to have a little bit of advanced notice, so then that way they know that the students are going to be working on course selection. Some of the teachers, the student preparation for the next level class, that was something maybe that, maybe they need to take a look at. And the recommendations for the next level classes of the input that the teachers have. And from the students, they would like more time to meet with counselors. And they would like a better understanding of some of the prerequisites of, of the different courses. So, you know, their general comments were maybe more communication with eighth-grade students as they transition to high school. And clarification, and a lot of it, we, you know, kind of talked a little tonight, maybe clarification of graduation credits and the process for class selections. And someone even suggested maybe a, a flow chart, something a little bit more visual to be able to see where you kind of move along. So, so those were some of the comments. And also, we've gotten information from Lashonda in regards to our cultural events and more of an understanding of the cultures and the religious and honoring those. I don't know, Dr. Small, if you want to talk to that just a little bit. You had sent us a sample list of cultural celebrations by month, which was part of that discussion. It was just really good input.
So the recommendations that came from the Equity Committee surrounding a religious holiday and a cultural celebration, some of the key components of that involve making sure that we communicate with our parents so that they understand that if their child is going to miss school for a religious holiday, they certainly can excuse them for that. We have always had that in place, but to make it more known across our community for that component of it. for that component of it. We have, uh, when you look at the diversity of our community and the number of religious holidays and cultural celebrations that would occur, representing all of our students and their families, uh, it is wonderful to see the, the intensity of them. It also makes it difficult in terms of ensuring that during something that is a, uh, cultural holiday or a, a, some event of significance, that we can, um, make sure that there is nothing going on in the schoolhouse that the student would miss should they be gone. So the, uh, response is that, that, one, if that's possible to do that, if that's not possible, to ensure that our staff understand the diversity and the commitments of our students, and to balance that, especially when there are major assignments, when there are tryouts for competitions or for activities, uh, to make sure that there is absolutely no penalty to the student along the way.
Thank you. All right. Then that'll take us to the Illinois Association, uh, Illinois Association of School Boards Report. And I know Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. A few things, the next North Cook Division meeting is March 15th, to be hosted by the Wheeling School District, 21. Um, and, uh, the Division for IASB wanted to make sure to mention that any candidates for our school board that may be interested in attending, it is gonna be livestreamed, uh, for members, but then, uh, if any candidate would like to attend, um, and see the recordings of the livestreams or any other IASB resource, as a matter of fact, please let me know. I'm the liaison for our district, but I would be very, very happy with anybody who asks to share the links to that information on the website. I attended the PRESS, P-R-E-S-S, um, program webinar with timely updates last week. It was a one-hour webinar updating on bills passed during the second half of the 102nd General Assembly with regulatory updates and other information. And so that, that information is also available on IASB's website, and it's accessible to anybody in the public. Uh, there was a webinar last week entitled, "Understanding the Board Member's Role." This is part of a webinar series that IASB has been providing for candidates interested in, uh, the school board, um, positions. It included things like how to file your petitions, um, the, the dates and, and other things associated with running for school board. And this was called, "Understanding the Board Member's Role." It is an overview, uh, for elected school board member roles and responsibilities, and idea, and an idea of what to expect if someone is successfully, um, in the April, uh, election. And that is also available to the public on the IASB website. Last month was the Triple I Conference and Delegate Assembly, and one of our board members, uh, did attend and represented us. So at this time, I'd like to pass it over to Mrs. Klimkowitz for an update on how that went.
All right, so you've, you've gotten the, um, the minutes from the delegates' assembly. I don't know if anyone has any questions in regards to it. If not, I'll, I'll keep going. No questions, okay. The general sessions were, were very good. I'd like to just highlight two of the general sessions because I think it fits in very well with some of the comments and things that were made this evening and things that we deal with. For the first general session, there was a gentleman, and I'm hoping I'm not mispronouncing his name, Sekou Andrews. And he uses his poetic voice, very energetic, very, um, dynamic. And he does presentations to various committees. Um, he does fort, uh, presentations to Fortune 500 committees, or, excuse me, companies, you know, with branding their image, and he uses what, you know, in quotes, poetic voice. It's a category, cutting-edge category of speaking that seamlessly blends inspirational speaking with spoken word poetry to help organizations tell their most powerful stories. And that's really what he did. And what he talked about was taking things to the next level, and he talked about resilience. And he, he also talked about, you know, preparing for the unknown, which I thought was very interesting. You know, accept and transform, never rejecting something. Taking the information or the ideas or concerns and, and take a look at it and see what you can do in regards to it. And he talked about children and how they learn and how resilient they are. And to, to prepare for everything that's, that you don't know. Also, learning how to relearn, and as being adults, we need to be doing that also. One of the comments he made was to learn from those outside of your area to get a new perspective. And one of our speakers this evening touched upon that and the importance of it. So I thought this was, you know, just right on there. Uh, he also said, "We need to learn from students because they're wonderful teachers." He talked about connecting our stories with another person's story and create an opportunity for others to really find out about you and you to find out about that person. He talked about fostering empathy and people being bonded by a purpose. And what purpose does that experience produce? How can you work together that way? He also talked about, um, the greatest resource is each person, so each one of us has a lot to offer. And it was, it was, it was really good. He was extremely, uh, energetic, and it was a wonderful presentation on, on really resilience. The second, this general session that I wanted to highlight is the author Amanda Ripley. And, uh, she writes about human behavior and change for The Atlantic, The Washington Post, and other publications. And her presentation was on High Conflict, Why We Get Trapped and How We Get Out. Again, she talked about, as our speaker mentioned, you know, there's, there's conflict going on, and we don't listen to people sometimes. And that was part of what she said. Good conflict is asking questions. And there's good conflict, you get angry about something, it's a surprise, there's fidelity, there's curiosity. High conflict, that's where people show contempt for one another, um, there's rigidity, and they put people down, there's a lot of simplicity. She gave some examples, um, talked about, you know, some of her experiences and things that, that she's been involved in and helping people work through it. One of the things she pointed out was, to get people out of conflict, you get them to talk it out and invite them out. She gave examples of gang members and how they've, uh, changed their lives and how they work with others. It was, uh, she was, she was really, she was really moving and, and right on point, and, uh, you know, given the, the times and how things have been going. Uh, she does have a book, High Conflict, Why We Get Trapped and How We Get Out. I think it would be worthwhile to, to take a look at it, and I plan on getting it, and I'll share whatever I, I can with, uh, my fellow board members. I did attend, uh, several of the workshops, you know, one of them was about building resilience, student and educator wellness. It provided some information about statewide, uh, social, emotional, and wellness initiatives through the ISBE. And I'll share some information in regards to that. I'll put that in writing and get it out to, uh, to the board members. So these, these were, these were very exciting, um, speakers that we had.
Thank you, Mrs. Klimkowitz. So, um, you know, several of us have, have attended these conferences in the years past. Fortunately, fortunately, Mrs. Klimkowitz was able to go again and, um, and bring back, and I look forward to additional sharing of information. I also want to, uh, to thank her very much for representing us, uh, at the Delegate Assembly and putting forth our, um, formerly consensus, um, decisions on some of the resolutions that were being presented. So thank you very much.
Thank you. They did use, um, little clickers this time. So there was no more paddles, usually they had the paddles. Um, we had the little clickers, and it was simple. It was either a yes or a no. Those were the two choices people had, and it, it, it worked out quite well. So it went, still lasted longer than, uh, the given timeframe, but it, it worked out extremely well. Thank you. That takes us to Parent Connection and Communications Report. Mr. Dombrowski or Ms. Cavill?
Yeah, I had attended, we had, uh, probably about six parents there or so. About that, we broke up into about three groups. The focus of the, um, committee was, uh, information and communications and kind of streamlining and prioritizing how, how parents receive that information, and, and kind of what we do now as far as where we go and get that, and if we were to consolidate and, and prioritize. And, and I think we, we were able to give, uh, Ms. Holmes a, a, uh, pretty good list of, of top five items that would be, um, beneficial to parents to have at their fingertips. And I think that's pretty much the summary of that ma, meeting. Um, both, uh, Superintendent Small and, and Ms. Holmes were there. They're, they're welcome to add to this report.
You mentioned about some, some tips for parents at their fingertips.
This was, uh, surrounding the app development, which is part of the strategic plan, is to examine it and see, uh, what needs we would need, or, I'm sorry, what would be looking for in an app to actually meet the needs of the parents. That's what he's referencing.
Thank you. All right, then that takes us to, uh, there's an announcement with upcoming events, the calendars. And, um, since it is on our agenda, the closed session, the recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any, okay, any discussion? Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
No.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No. All right. Then that takes us to, um, our last recommended actions. The first one being that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Joyce Doyle effective December 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Laura Carbowski effective May 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. And Tina Reimer effective May 2024, according to the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. Next recommended action is that employee Sheila Takata be suspended for 10 days without pay. Further, that the board secretary notify said employee in writing of this action by the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And the last item is that effective July 1st, 2023, Eric Hauser be appointed as Athletic Director of James B. Conan High School at a gross salary of $148,500. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And with no other business coming before the board, the board president declares this meeting of the Board of Education adjourned at 10:17 PM.